This is a special meeting on transit. Today's date is February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is twelve P. M. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm calling this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. I went online to see what federal grants are available for transit. I found a couple of the following examples. First one I found out there on the website, wwwtransit.dot.gov, is eligible recipients. States, local government authorities, and designated recipients are direct recipients. Eligible sub-receipients include private nonprofit organizations, states or local authorities, and operators of public transportation. Operators of public transportation are entities that provide regular, continuous share-ride service, transportation services that are open to the general public or open to a segment of the general public defined by age, disability, or low income. Operators of public transportation are eligible as sub-receipients for non-traditional Section five-three-one-zero projects. I found another one out there titled Investment in America. The Biden and Harris administration strengthens transit manufacturing industry with a one-point-five-billion from bipartisan infrastructure law to put more American-made buses on the road. This was last July. One of the recipients of this was the Shoshone-Bannonook tribe. They received seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred dollars to buy five buses and two vans to replace their older ones. The new vehicles will enable the tribe to provide much-needed bus service on the Fort Hall Reservation and into Blackfoot and Power County, Idaho. These two grants point out the following. Sub-receipients include private nonprofit organizations. So how is it Cootenay County, Cootenay Health is granting, is getting grant money for buses when they are a for-profit hospital? Why does, why does not the Coeur d'Alene tribe get their own grant like the other ones in Idaho? It seems to me Cootenay Health, the Coeur d'Alene tribe, and the county cities are letting the county do all the work to get, manage, and take the risk of the grants for the transit system. I hope this can be explained a little better during this meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on the phone? Okay, on to business. First item, detailed analysis of transit to discuss service levels, routes, and funding sources, and we have our Transit Manager Chad Engel here.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me here today to talk about public transportation. I am Chad Engel with the Transit Department for the record. I'm excited to discuss the significant impact of public transit in Cootenay County and our current transit system structure. So in two thousand and seventeen, the county conducted a service and fair equity analysis for public transportation. The results of this study formed the foundation for the county's current public transportation operations. By comparing our system to up-to-date census data, assessing factors such as population density, destinations, diversity of use, design, and demographics, we can evaluate how effective our existing services address community needs and ensure the system's alignment with optimal transit orientation. As seen here, this heat map illustrates our bus routes with a quarter-mile walk shed surrounding each route and overlays population density, people per square mile, and this is taking the two thousand and twenty census data. The dark blue areas indicate population density over seven thousand people per square mile. So as you can see, our routes are hitting pretty close to or near the population density as needed. This heat map illustrates employment density, employees per acre. The dark red areas indicate employment density over a twenty-five employee per acre, and as you can see, it's pretty centrally located there in Coeur d'Alene, and our bus system is right on that employment center there. The mixed-use heat map displays the density of retail and services represented by employees per acre. The dark purple area highlights regions with more than four employees per acre. Again, you can see that our bus routes are right in line with what needs, the needs of the mixed use. The pedestrian scale block map, this shows us the density of a scale block, which refers to a block size designed for walkability. The dark green areas indicate location with density of over three hundred blocks per The low-income household map shows us households in the poverty level per square mile. Again, our routes are pretty well in line with what needs, what the needs are for the area at the time, at this time. Low-income ownership reflects households owning zero, I'm sorry, low income, that did not change, sorry, there we go. Low-vehicle ownership map reflects household owning zero to one cars per acre. And then this brings it all together, where all the data converge into a single composite score, highlighting areas that would benefit from improved public transportation, thereby increasing access to jobs and services. As shown, our current system effectively serves the high-density areas. The updated census data reflects a change to the Coeur d'Alene urbanized area zone, bringing the total population within the zone to one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-three. Within this urbanized area, eight, eighty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven people, representing sixty-four-point-six percent of the population, live within the transit area. So that means they're within walking distance of public transportation. Public transportation is essential for improving the quality of life in our community. It provides critical access to medical services, educational institutions, grocery stores, restaurants, and recreational activities. By facilitating these vital connections, public transportation encourages residents to engage more fully in their community and supports the growth of local businesses. In Cootenay County, we benefit from a comprehensive public transportation network that includes three fixed routes and a total of eighty-one bus stops. These stops are strategically distributed across key areas, including Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, Dalton Gardens, and Hutter, ensuring that our community members can easily access the services they need. More than three hundred and fifty businesses, including apartments, banks, educational institutions, and medical facilities, are located within a quarter-mile of our stops, enhancing the convenience and utility of the transit system. The system operates with buses that seat thirty-two passengers and feature front racks for two bicycles, as well as accommodates for two individuals in wheelchairs. In fiscal year twenty-four, the fixed route service provided one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-four unlinked passenger trips, covering one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifteen vehicle revenue miles and operating for eleven-thousand-thirty-seven revenue hours. Our Intelligent Transportation System, or ITS, plays a crucial role in enhancing public transportation by improving efficiency, safety, and overall user experience. Our ITS provides real-time information on arrivals and delays, enabling passengers to plan their journeys more effectively. We partner with Passio Technologies to implement our ITS, which includes a real-time app, a user-friendly website, and integration with Apple and Google Maps, streamlining trip planning for our riders. Additionally, data collected through ITS allows us to make informed decisions regarding resource allocation and service planning. Overall, ITS transforms public transportation into a more reliable and convenient option for all users. As part of the Federal Transit Administration, or FTA, requirements for providing fixed route services, we are required to offer ADA paratransit services for individuals with ADA-eligible functional limitations that prevent them from using fixed route buses. Our paratransit services provide curb-to-curb transportation within a three-quarter-mile radius of the fixed route. A common misconception is that paratransit is exclusively for medical transportation or personalized services. In reality, it is public transportation, it's a public transportation option designed to enhance mobility for eligible riders and operates under the same guidelines as our fixed route services. In fiscal year twenty-four, paratransit services facilitated twelve-thousand-and-seventy-five unlinked passenger trips, traveled sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-eight revenue miles, and operated for six-thousand-and-seventy-seven revenue hours. Ring-a-Ride is considered a demand-response service and was established to provide essential transportation services to seniors and individuals with disabilities residing outside the three-quarter-mile area surrounding our fixed routes. This service brings seniors and individuals with disabilities into the designated service area, allowing them access to vital resources such as shopping, medical care, and much more. Each eligible individual can utilize up to eight round trips per month. This service is particularly beneficial for those facing mobility challenges or for whom transportation options are insufficient, inappropriate, or unavailable. In fiscal year twenty-four, Ring-a-Ride service accounted for one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four unlinked passenger trips, eight-thousand-and-fifty-seven revenue miles, and seven-hundred-and-eighty revenue hours. This map illustrates the service area of our public transportation system. The fixed routes are marked with a three-quarter-mile paratransit zone indicated in the pink. The green area highlights the designated zone served by our Ring-a-Ride services. As a recipient of Federal Transportation Administration funds, Cootenay County is tasked with conducting oversight activities, technical inspections, and site visits to ensure that sub-receipients and contractors comply with regulatory and statutory requirements. Cootenay County Public Transportation collaborates with various partners to enhance service delivery and secure funding, focusing on planning, network design, bus stop maintenance, and transportation services. Public involvement is essential for prioritizing transportation needs, which helps us strengthen communities and improve mobility for all residents. Cootenay County Public Transportation reports to the Federal Transit Administration, the Idaho Transportation Department, the Board of County Commissioners, the Cootenay Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, and local jurisdictions. A key partnership with Cootenay Health offers demand-response, non-emergency medical transportation services within Cootenay County. In fiscal year twenty-four, Cootenay Health provided twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two unlinked passenger trips, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-eleven revenue miles, and eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-two revenue hours. Idaho is one of the few states that does not allocate state funds for public transportation. As a result, we depend heavily on partnerships with local jurisdictions, Cootenay County, and key stakeholders, including the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, to sustain and enhance our transit system. Cootenay County Public Transportation is primarily funded through federal grants awarded by the Federal Transit Administration and the Idaho Transportation Department. Matching funds are provided by Cootenay County and participating cities, along with contribution from partners such as the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, Cootenay Health, and the Area Agency on Aging. And that's what I have for our services, if there's any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Do we have any questions up here?
Not right now.
No, right now. Commissioner Eberlein, do you have any questions right now?
No.
I have a couple. I want to understand a little bit about the Cootenay Health program. Is this something that Cootenay Health would be able to, and they're a nonprofit hospital, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So would they be able to apply for these grants on their own? For these non-emergent medical service?
For the buses?
Yes.
They probably could, yes.
Yeah. How come we're doing that?
It was just a partnership that was formed back in, actually, I think Commissioner Eberlein was in on the initiation of that back in two thousand and fifteen. It was just a program that Cootenay Health had going in nineteen ninety-five, and we wanted to partner so that we could both benefit from the services.
But it's not open to the public, though, is it?
Well, it is open to the public.
Well, I mean, it's not open as far as to, for medical services outside of Cootenay Health, meaning that if a patient of Northwest Specialty or, you know, some other medical service provider wanted to get a ride for their patient, there is no easy way for that to happen.
Well, as of right now, it's with Cootenay Health. That's correct.
Yeah.
And I mean, if Northwest Specialty Hospital or Heritage Health or anybody else was willing and able to provide the same transportation services, I think it would behoove Cootenay County to partner with them because it does help to generate match funds.
Yeah.
And that's what really helps it to keep funding where it should be, and that's bringing money back from the federal, federal agencies, and we're able to utilize that back here in Cootenay County. This match funds for in-kind match doesn't count, cost the county relatively anything. All we have to do is monitor and keep track and make sure that things are happening the way that they do, so overall, it's a significant savings to the county.
Well, but it's also a liability in the sense that we have to, you know, we're taking on these grants, we're responsible for managing the grants properly, we're responsible for being, people being in compliance, and that if something goes wrong, it could have an adverse impact on the county. And, you know, so my question is, if they can do it themselves, why are we doing it? One. And two, if we are going to do it, why aren't we doing it in such a way that all the medical service providers are included in this if we're going to get behind these grants?
Again, it's a, it's a great partnership that we can have with Cootenay Health where we then are able to get in-kind match through the program. So it's a huge cost savings to the county and to the system as a whole. And we, like I said, we'd be more than happy to partner with anybody else, but nobody else has the funding availability to put together a transportation program.
Have you spoken with other entities about this?
Well, that's what we talked about in the last meeting, is that we would initiate conversations with that, but as far as, that was something that we had talked about internally, but it hasn't happened.
Okay. Well, I guess I just, it stands out to me when you say no one else has the funds for it, but you haven't spoken with anyone to determine whether they have the funds for it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, Cootenay Health is the one who initiated this program to begin with in nineteen ninety-five with no assistance from the county or anybody else.
Okay.
So if they had the funding for it, I would assume that they would probably do the same thing. That's just an assumption that they would.
Okay. Well, my question is really geared more towards, are we doing it? Do you know for sure? But it sounds like you don't know for sure because we haven't spoken with anybody, and so therefore, you're just assuming that other entities don't have the resources for this.
Again, that was conversation we had in the last meeting stating that we would start having the conversations with other providers.
I understand. I understand. Thank you. So with that said, then, this program could not, these buses could not be used for other entity, other medical service providers to, to have their patients picked up from their homes, taken to their appointments, and then returned. Is that correct?
That's where we have our paratransit and Ring-a-Ride services for those.
Okay, but I'm not asking about that, okay? And I'm sorry, but, you know, I'm just asking a simple question. So that the Cootenay Health buses, at this point in time, cannot be used for other medical service providers. Is that correct?
Cootenay Health is using them in, for their.
Yes or no? See, this is the hard part, is that I'm just asking these simple questions to try to understand what's going on, and, you know, it makes it harder for me to advocate for what you're doing if I just can't get answers to what I believe to be very simple questions. And that's part of the reason I'm just asking these questions, because I don't know. And I think it's important that if I'm going to be asked to say yes for grants, and yes for more money, and yes to ask the county to take on the liability of these grants, I should know exactly what I'm saying yes to. So I'll ask the question one more time. At this point in time, can the Cootenay Health buses be used to transport patients for other medical service providers?
Again, it is part of the Cootenay Health network, and that's how it's been set up, and that's how it goes.
So.
So, no, they're not using it for every drop-off location out there.
So if we said, if this board said we would like Northwest Specialty patients to be picked up by these buses, taken to their appointments, and then dropped off, can that happen?
With the Cootenay Health buses? No.
Okay, so they cannot be used for other medical service providers at this point? Outside of Cootenay Health?
Outside of Cootenay Health.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay. I did see a list at one point where there were other.
They have.
Or other health services like eye doctors and stuff like that.
Correct.
So are those part of the Cootenay Health network, then?
Yes.
Okay, so all within the Cootenay Health network. So are you in charge of the operations for Cootenay Health Transit? Okay. So some of these questions are probably better asked to Cootenay Health themselves.
Correct. Yeah, the Cootenay Health pays for and runs all the operations for it. We supply the buses.
Yeah.
I have a question. Is Cootenay Health a five-oh-one-C-three? Is, is Cootenay Health a nonprofit?
They are a nonprofit.
How, how, how does a five-oh-one-C-three work into that?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for on that, but they're, they're a nonprofit organization, so they're.
What kind of a nonprofit are they?
Well, I don't have Cootenay Health's information on that, I'm sorry.
So I think there's also a distinction between Cootenay Health Transportation and Cootenay Health Hospital, because wasn't the, there was a transportation piece that was formed before Cootenay Health became five-oh-one?
It was, yeah. It was well before they reorganized into their current state, yes.
So now both organizations, the, the transportation and now the hospital are both nonprofits?
As far as I'm aware, it's.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
And it was probably a, its own entity, government type, right? Because it had its own elected board and so forth, before it converted to nonprofit status.
Are you talking about the transportation piece or the actual hospital?
Well, I'm talking about Cootenay Health in general, so, because it wasn't always a nonprofit, is that correct?
The hospital was not always a nonprofit. That just changed recently, but my understanding is the actual entity that runs Cootenay Health Medical Transportation is its own five-oh-one-C-three.
Mm-hmm.
And that started prior to the hospital transferring from a community hospital into a nonprofit.
Yeah. You know, this is one of those things where I just, I kind of wonder why we're in this business, and if it's something that they can do on their own, you know, why are we doing it?
I think it's a conversation we can absolutely have with them as a, as a partner and stakeholder, but I think to approach it from this angle, I, I think is problematic because we don't have the answers, we're not speaking to the partner.
Yeah, well, I think part of the problem here is the fact that we are taking on these grants for buses for a partner, and we don't have the answers. And that's part of the problem I have, is why are we doing something if we don't have the answers to basic questions?
I, I've heard the answers that they don't give transportation outside of their network. So what, what other answer are you looking for?
I'm not looking for another answer. What I'm looking for are just the fact that it, you know, when you bring, when you, you know, kind of step up and say, well, we need to be talking to Cootenay Health to get answers to questions. What questions, you know, why, why do we need to rely on someone else if we're the ones who are saying yes to the grants? We should have the answers. We should understand exactly how the dispatch works. We should understand, you know, whether or not these rides can be utilized by other medical service providers. I mean, I had to ask the question on more than one occasion to get to the final answer of, no, another medical service provider cannot utilize the Cootenay Health bus. I mean, it shouldn't be that difficult.
The last meeting Chad said that.
Actually, he said that it wasn't quite that straightforward because he mentioned that Heritage Health, there, there was a ride for a Heritage Health patient, if I remember correctly, and even a Northwest Specialty patient.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, it wasn't a straightforward answer, and that's why I keep asking the same question until I can get a very straightforward answer, which in this case is no, no one else can do that. And so then, the, the board itself should be deciding, do we want to continue? Is there some way that we could offer this program and expand it to other medical service providers? Is there any way that we could do that? I mean, do you not think Northwest Specialty patients should be included in this kind of service if county is going to get behind the grants for these buses?
Absolutely, if Northwest Specialty comes up with their own transportation entity and provides the operations and, and goes from there, and then, you know, that's a conversation that we have with the buses and the partnership.
Yeah, and the fact is that Cootenay Health could also apply for these grants on their own and get them.
But we'd have to find out how that affects the transportation system overall, because it is a very integrated system. So, yeah, it's a great conversation worth having, but it's not as simple as just take them out of the mix and everything runs the same. We have more details to consider.
Well, I understand, and so that would end, you know, that's where we're, you know, you know, you mentioned a few times before where, you know, boards shouldn't be bound by previous decisions by other boards, but in effect, we are bound. We're bound because we've built this system that by default, we have to continue saying yes to it. And that's where I, I start to question, you know, why, you know, why are we binding future boards? Why were we bound to have to say yes to these things? You know, I look at some of the documentation that Mr. Engel gave us, and, you know, if you could, Jonathan, put up, put up two-nineteen-C. This is from our own systems, and you can kind of see just the dollars and how they've gone up each year. Sorry, is there any way to expand that so it fills up the whole screen? You know, we started off in two thousand and sixteen with, you know, just under a million, nineteen-hundred, nine-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars, and we're at, you know, three-point-two for two thousand and twenty-four and four-point-two in two thousand and twenty-three. So it's grown a lot over the years. If you could go to D, that's just a chart of the revenue growth. The trend line on this is to continue to grow. So, you know, my question is, to what end? Where are we going with this? And, you know, and just for the record, and I've said this before, but, you know, I don't have a desire to shut down transit or affect it, you know, in that kind of a way. My issue has always been, why is the county backstopping a program that, if you look at the maps that Mr. Engel provided, serve the cities? And is there a benefit that a resident in Athel or Harrison is getting, that a city resident is not getting from the county to offset that? Because we've had these discussions, well, you know, city residents or county residents, but not all, you know, not everyone in the county is getting a benefit from this particular service. And so I ask, what is the, the citizen in Athel that does not have a stop up there? Or the citizen in Harrison who, that does not have a stop? What? Or the citizen in Harrison that does not have a stop? What are they getting from us taking on this liability, us taking on this commitment, that, you know, why are we doing it? And, you know, it's a rhetorical question. I'm not looking for an answer, but if you want to give an answer, you're welcome to.
Sure. So in general, I think the service is, is good and necessary. If we're trying to, you know, what problems are we trying to solve? Is it financial? Is it governance? Is it operations? Is it liability? So what benefit do the cities, who are about 55% of the population, or valuation, I should say, 55% of the valuation in the county, they're subsidizing community development, they're subsidizing KCSO patrol, they're subsidizing building and grounds, IT. So those are all non-required services. So again, this is kind of a partnership on a larger level. So if we're trying to solve financial issues, then we can absolutely get the stakeholders involved and come up with a methodology. So it is more equitable spread where the service is occurring. I would argue, though, that like education, like schools, where a lot of people are not using the benefit of schools, but they're still paying for them, they get the benefit of the transportation, because the places that they go and shop and eat are staffed by people who use the system. The medical services, people are able to get to their appointments who don't have cars, whereas if this service didn't exist, then they would be using ambulances, they would be using ER, they would be delaying service where if they had just been able to get on a bus and go to their medical appointments. So this is kind of a much bigger entity to, to talk about. And I'm willing to have all those conversations, but it's been kind of unclear over the last year and a half, where we're, what your purpose is, what's your, what problem are you trying to solve?
Well, I can tell you, I've said this before, that costs should be properly allocated to where the benefit is received. You know, I mean, that's, that is in essence, just a policy standpoint that I have. And when you look at the revenue growth chart there, you know, what you're seeing is a program, like a lot of government programs, that just continue to expand and expand and expand over time. To what end? Where are we going with this? From my understanding, there's been conversations where the city of Rathdrom wants to start to get service. Well, is it the county's job to provide service to every city as they continue to grow like this? Is that our job? Is that what we're supposed to be doing as a board? And I would argue, no. I would argue that the benefit goes to the cities, and therefore, the cities should be, you know, stakeholders in that. And, you know, I've had conversations with others, you know, and you know this, we've had these conversations with folks throughout the county. There are people who have questions about this transit system connecting with Spokane. And for those people, the answer is, we're two commissioners away from deciding to connect with Spokane. I've had conversations with other people who care deeply about keeping the transit system. And like I explained to them, they're two commissioners away from this thing being unwound.
So.
So in an effort to maintain stability for an entity, for, in an effort to maintain where costs should be allocated, which is where the benefit is being enjoyed by the cities, you know, I would argue that the cities should, you know, be the stakeholders, that there should be an agreement among the cities, no different than like KNPO, where you have like, kind of like a joint powers agreement, and you have a board, and then you have a transit manager, like Chad would, you know, come before and say, this is what we need, and this is our budget for the next year. And then each of those entities would contribute into that. But they would have control over it. It would create a sense of stability for, for the service itself, because every two years, this board, two-thirds of it can change, every two years. That's built into the system of it. So that has really been my stance on it for the last year and a half, although it's really been more recently, because now I'm starting to understand what it is, you know, who it serves, the commitments that the county has to make for these grants. These are the most difficult grants to manage because of the multiple match sources. That's a reality, and we have to do it right. If there is a mistake on these things, we can have a finding that can affect our ability to get other grants, that can affect our ability to raise a bond, you know? I mean, these are things that, you know, the county is taking on. And I would love to be in a situation where we just write a check and say, hey, you take care of it, and whatever ends up happening, you know, it's your problem. It's not our problem. We just write the checks. But that's not the case here, and that's why I ask. And, you know, on this revenue chart, you know, where is it going? Where is it going to be in two years? Where is it going to be in four years? And should this board not set the policy of where we want it to be?
So that is done through the human transportation plan. So every five years, this plan has to be done. I think this one's a little bit delayed, but that was likely due to COVID and other issues. Then this board decides, along with the stakeholders, because the stakeholders are the ones making input to the human transportation plan. And I haven't heard negative from any of the cities involved. I haven't heard that they're not being listened to. I haven't heard that anything is unfair. So when you talk about changing governance, you have to be careful, because any governance change to what we're doing right now is going to increase the cost, and it brings up other issues of, I, I'm part of three joint powers right now. And part of the governance problem with the joint powers is there is no direct overseeing of the director or the staff. So it, this model right now, with all of its warts and problems, is the most efficient and best model that we have right now. And I'm always happy to have those conversations, but the cities didn't want to go into a joint powers, because they are happy with what we're doing. And if they weren't, they are able to tell us at any time. To the fact of two commissioners changing every two years, and that will hook us with Spokane or unwind this, that's not true. It is way more complicated than that. So in order to hook up with Spokane, there's ample finances that will need to be provided. The stakeholders will have to be engaged and onboard in order to make that happen. To unwind it, same thing. We're going to have to find out what that cost is going to be to the county and to the stakeholders to unwind the thing. So when we're talking about finances, I think we should do an in-depth look to make sure that the allocation is correct, and work with our stakeholders to develop a methodology to, to, you know, to, to come up with that. Could it be something like Panhandle Health, where we do valuation and population, where we do service levels? There's, there's a lot of ways we can figure out this methodology. Governance, you're just going to grow government. So any other governance structure is going to grow government. And if you guys are okay with that, then that's something that we need to look at.
It's been growing under these boards. I mean, this program has been continuing to grow.
But I would argue that you, you haven't, that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. The amount of money that it costs to maintain anything nowadays is astronomical because of inflation. So if you don't apply the inflationary factor, then how do we know? And what are the different spike points in there? Was it capital projects? I mean, there's, just to put a graph up there and, and just say, this is where we're at, it needs to be more detailed oriented.
Look, you know, we've been working together for a couple of years, and you're, you are a star at throwing stones at things. We have not ever had a conversation, or have you ever driven a conversation to try to solve or address these problems?
I have been unclear about what the problems are. It's, it's denial of these, these grants. We, we bring up a different governance to the stakeholders. They say, no, thank you. So I'm not sure exactly what, you know, if you're just trying to deny grants to force the stakeholders to come up to a point of governance, then, then that should be transparent, and that should be a conversation that we have with them.
Well, actually, I never said that. You're the one who said that. What I had said a couple of weeks ago was that we are presented with these grant opportunities, and we never really understand how that fits into the bigger picture of things. That's what I've said. And frankly, I believe it's a dereliction of duty to be just saying, yes, 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 to all these grants without really understanding. So my question to you is, you know, how many more grants should we automatically be approving to get to a revenue level that meets the service levels for where we want this program to be? And I don't have an answer to that. All I know is that we just keep getting presented with individual grants. I've said this countless times before. The problem with being a county commissioner, the challenge, is that we're presented with decisions that are for little trees without understanding what the forest is going to look like. And, you know, this is one of those situations, that we've never really looked at, you know, how these grants fit into the overall scheme of things, how it fits into the, you know, the amount of the total revenue scheme. You know, we've never talked about that stuff. We just get these grants and say, we have this opportunity, we can get this grant, here's what the match is, we have the match, don't worry about it, everything is good, just please approve it. And I believe that we should use a little more prudence on these things and understand how it fits into the bigger picture and where we want to be, you know? And from my understanding, there has been discussions of looking into getting additional monies for Rathdrom, is that correct?
Nothing has, yeah, the board has not.
But, well, I know the board hasn't, but have you done anything to look into how that might be a possibility?
Well, it would take different funding sources than what we currently have.
Yes or no? Have you looked into any opportunities for additional grants or grant sources for the city of Rathdrom?
No.
To expand?
It would take different funding sources, and then we haven't explored it.
Okay. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, again, we haven't really talked about this stuff, and I'd like to, I think it's worth having that conversation. I think from the city perspective, I think that they should, you know, consider seriously about joining in a group, because, you know, I do believe that it's a lot simpler than what you're saying. If two commissioners decide they wanted to connect to Spokane, we've had two commissioners that wanted to change the form of government, and we've had two commissioners want to do a lot of things that the community was not really excited about. And so I do think that that, as well as unwinding it, which we've had discussions on what would be involved in that, that it's something that people should want to have more legitimate stakeholders. And my definition of a stakeholder is probably different than yours, Commissioner Duncan. Mine is somebody who gets the upside and takes the downside. That's a stakeholder, that they get the upside and they have to settle for the downside. It sounds like your definition is, they get the upside, but they don't have to participate or be on the hook for the downside. I don't know.
Now, you're putting words in my mouth. And I never did say that you said the denial of, you know, grants was going to lower service. That was somebody else who said that to me.
Mind if I change the subject?
Yeah, go ahead.
So some years ago, Woody, we, we, I put together a package to go try to sort out transit systems and what could be good for the Cootenay County. So we met over there across the street, and we hashed it around. And what, what happens is, the cities don't want to take the money, and they don't have that kind of sources to be able to, to build the thing. And so as a consequence, it, the only thing that would work would be the Cootenay County. It's the only thing that's big enough, but, because, but no, they could have done it by themselves, piecemeal, without the county, but they didn't want to because of the hassle, just exactly like what's going on right here and right now. They don't want the hassle. If somebody wants to have a transit system, let them build a transit system. But who's going to, who's going to, who's going to do it?
So another benefit for the county to have governance here, and I'm not saying that this is going to be forever, is that there is a level of, let me think about what that word is.
Chop suey?
No. Well, you're going to make me hungry here at lunchtime. The county is able to remain neutral. They're able to look at all the requests that come in, and they're able to remain neutral in this. So until the cities get together and take it from the county, then this is the lowest cost, most efficient way to do it. Again, I am more than happy to start that methodology conversation to find out if the finances are truly being allocated properly. So, and there's other governance, governance ways to do things. The liability thing, this board alone, in my opinion, well, this one and the last one, has done more to cause problems with liability than, than any other board that I'm aware of. So we need to talk about how to maintain that liability, and we have for how many ever years previous. So.
Could, could you be specific on, when you say cost-efficient way? This is the most cost-efficient. What do you mean exactly by that? Because there is just a cost to run it.
Right.
You know, so how, how, how is that more efficient? What do you, what do you mean by that?
What I mean by that is, if you have another governance body, that brings in more things that you will have to allocate funds to. And this is why getting that methodologies.
These are all abstract concepts, and they're not backed by anything.
HR, HR, legal, potentially other governance issues that come into effect. Right now, Cootenay County is subsidizing those things because we have efficiency of scale. So that's why a methodology would be helpful, so we can put those figures into it to make sure, again, that the people getting the most service are properly allocating the funds towards that. So I would really like to have those conversations. Now, switching from 2024 to 2025 has been very beneficial to get that tax burden down to hardly anything, but it still doesn't go far enough to incorporate the ancillary services that we are providing. So again, having those conversations with the stakeholders to say, these are the additional things that the county's providing that we want to put into the equation, I think is important.
Yeah. Well, I think that your comments about the expenses are a little overblown, and largely because, one, if you really want to see what the expenses are, you could look at KNPO and see that they don't have those kind of expenses.
They're not operational. They do not have operations. KNPO is not an operational body. They're a planning body.
Again, you know, you know, the, you can retain an attorney when you need it. You can, you know, HR, I'm not sure how many people you're referring to for HR. We only have, I believe, three people in transit right now, in the chart that I was given for administration. Is that correct?
There's five.
Five, okay, so five people. I don't know what kind of HR department one needs for five people. But I think that your idea of these expenses are just a little more overblown than what they really would be.
Well, until we get numbers on paper, we don't really know, do we?
Man, I'm sure that in your business, your family business, you don't have an HR department. I know I don't with my business, so.
And this is government, so that gives you a whole nother level, a whole nother set of laws that you have to comply with as a government entity.
I'm not so sure I agree with that from an HR perspective, but, you know, either way, you know, the point of this is really to kind of discuss it, and, you know, unless you have anything else to say, Commissioner Eberline, or you have anything else to say, Commissioner Duncan?
It's not snowing out there.
You know, I thank you, Mr. Engel, for coming out.
You bet.
And discussing this. And I think as a board, we're going to have to decide, you know, where we should be on a revenue side for this transit program, because it's continued to grow year over year. The trend line is there for the service levels. And, you know, maybe someone on this board wants to see it go up to six million or five million, I don't know. And maybe other people on the board want to see it down to two million. But we should figure out where that number is for the service levels, and then I think we'll have a much better idea, at least from my perspective, on these grants, if we're going to be saying yes to them, and where they fit into the annual revenues.
Can I make a comment on that growth comment? So the growth that you see, we have not changed service levels. Service levels. So the growth that you see, we have not changed service levels. Service levels have maintained. All we do is get grants in order to keep status quo. So we're just replacing buses, we're replacing anything that's getting broke or whatever at this point. That's, that's all the grants that come before you. And this transit revenue growth takes into account the in-kind match.
Mm-hmm.
So in-kind is not actual cash that's being used. It's just a value that we use to draw down federal funds. So you would, you would have to take into account that these are not true actual dollars being spent on transit.
I understand that. But they are dollars that are allocated to transit. They are dollars that are allocated to the grants. And, you know, some of it's match and some of it's cash. And it just, it depends on the blend. So, but again, it all counts in the big pie. And that, in essence, is really, you know, the question here is, what do we want this pie? How big does this board want that pie to be? And, you know, if you have experience with inflation and so forth, you know, we should be able to see the effects of that, how the cost has gone up over time. And then that can be accounted for, you know? But from this chart, I don't understand why it's gone up so much if the service levels have remained the same.
Well, I'll tell you, labor has gone up extremely much. So paying bus drivers and
Are we paying the bus drivers, or are they being
It's included in that number. It's included in that number.
Yeah, that's your match, right?
Yes.
On some of that stuff?
Some of that, yeah. But yeah, it's in what you have up there, it's included in there.
Yeah.
And everything for maintenance has just gone astronomical. I mean,
And even the cost of buses, too.
Correct.
Has gone up a lot.
We've over doubled what it costs for our paratransit buses. So, I mean, it's, it's evident in everything that we do, the economy is a different boat than what it was in 2016, 2012, 2000. I mean, we've seen it. So it's evident in just the economy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And if you go to, Jonathan, could you put up 219A real quick? You know, these were numbers you gave me, and it includes cash and in-kind match. So, you know, it's all in there. I get that. You know, the point being is that it's still a total dollar amount. And, you know, again, something has to be found in order to contribute to that, whether it's match or cash. So with that said, unless anyone else has anything else to say? Next up would be public comment. Come on down.
Ron Hartman for the record. Some of this is so the mayor can understand it. Kootenay County is the only county in the state that runs a bus system. No other county does that. You got property tax, property owners that are taxed for services that they don't receive. I don't, out where I live in the county, there's no bus routes, but it shows up on my property taxes. So I'm funding a service that's not provided to me. That's taxed without representation. Of course, the cities are happy because they're not paying the full bill, and they're not having to do any of the work of the, of the grants, or, or maintain the buses, or drive the buses, or anything along with it. They just send a check that they think is good enough. Well, it's pretty easy to calculate the total cost that should be applied to each of the cities and have them pay the full amount. All you got to do is take the total costs not covered by the grants, take the total miles driven, which are known, you get a cost per mile, you know the route, what each route mileage is, and you take cost per mile times that city's route, and that's what they should pay. It's pretty easy to calculate, and the county ought to demand that out of each of the cities. It's a fair amount. It's the right amount. The other one, there's a risk here that isn't being considered. We got a group called DOGE right now, and they're going through everything, and they're looking at grants and money they're handing out to everybody. Who says that they won't trim these grants? And now me, as a taxpayer, my amount goes up because the grants got cut. I think that's a pretty high risk under the current government, that these grants aren't going to stay the same. I appreciate the discussion about maybe having Kootenay Health find their own grant, but we overlooked the fact that the tribe can also do the same. I think I mentioned earlier that the Shoshone, Shoshone Bantamok tribe got $722,400 last year on their own. They didn't have Kootenay helping them. I think they can find their own grants, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone on the phone? No? All right. 12:55. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.